All right, it's five o'clock. Pretty sure everybody's been here. It is a short agenda, but we'll have our council meeting start at six o'clock. First item is approval of minutes. Any questions on those? I had actually did have a question. I noticed on the President's absence, it's on the... Were y'all going both portions of the interviews? I was just curious if somebody's there for a portion of that, would you just notice that they left in a second?
Yeah, this one.
Oh, I was gone for both portions, I'm sorry.
Okay, resolutions. Resolution 25-186, approved amendment for engineering on lighting rehabilitation, SR 20 US 31, in the amount of $22,700.
With the extended time of the contract and AECOM had given us a proposal about two years ago, and they're just asking for some additional funding due to the added time to the contract.
And MPO is helping out with some of these costs, is that...
My understanding, yes.
All right, any questions on that? Any timeframe?
Based on last I saw, I guess they could start blocking just from today through sometime early October, so I imagine here in the next few weeks, we'll start seeing some activity.
Okay, any questions? Resolution 25-187, approved proposal for the partnership for a drug-free community.
Good evening, Council. We presented this proposal from this agency, I guess it's been months now. Just kind of to re-discuss what was presented. There are a group out of Huntsville that has specialties in addressing the opioid crisis. We're recipients of litigation funds that are specific to opioid mitigation. And what these folks in the proposal will do is provide those services and allow us to use those funds to directly impact the crisis here in Decatur. What's being proposed is option one, and that'll allow us to still have some funds available. I know Jacob mentioned that AG was proposing some other services for the use of these funds, and so that is still an opportunity as well. Or if this goes swimmingly and we want to add more service that they're providing, we can do that as well.
Can we use those funds to purchase Narcan? Can you do that?
So, the training I sat in on made it very clear that it had to be very specific to opioids. So, with Narcan, I'm not a medical expert, but I guess that could...
Narcan only trade opioid produce.
Then it would be qualified. The example they gave was you couldn't buy an ambulance, because an ambulance could potentially serve other instances. It had to be specific to opioids.
Do we supply our officers with Narcan here, Chief? Do we supply our officers with Narcan?
I haven't figured it out, I'm sure.
I think so.
Yes.
We do.
Yeah. But this is more, Councilman McMasters and I spoke, this is more than... There is physical elements, but there is also the mental health piece that will be involved with this as it relates to the initial process of getting you help and what that looks, the next steps and staying recovered as you go.
I think the desire is to hopefully save the success in this program to the point to where we don't have a remote location in Huntsville, but we have a location here in the city providing clinical services.
Correct. Yeah, they did provide an option where they could come to Decatur and have a site. We just kind of wanted to dip our toes in it first to kind of see the results and how it can impact the city, and then kind of make those decisions after the fact.
What was the cost with the one that could have a site here? Was that option two?
It was like 1.7.
Yeah, 1.7. It's more than we have from the actual litigation.
All right, any other questions? All right, resolution 25-188, appoint Chad Bowman to Director of Planning. Any...
It's my understanding, no changes. My understanding is... City Clerk was saying something.
No.
Oh, you weren't? Oh, okay. I think he's supposed to be here, what, September the 2nd? And...
Yeah. Okay, any questions? Resolution 25-189, appoint Hunter Allen to Director of Parks and Recreation. With historic day was today.
Today.
Any questions on that? Resolution 25-190, appoint Donnie Jones to Director of these services. This was also...
This is today also, yes.
Any questions? All right, we'll get started at six.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are grateful for this time to come together as a city. We ask for your strength and your wisdom. We ask you comfort the room as we make decisions for your kingdom, and we thank you for everything you've given us in Jesus's name. Amen.
is between 24 and 48 hours. Time from initial phone call to entering treatment is 2.9 days, which is a very quick turnaround in aspects of trying to help individuals get into treatment because that window is very high risk for overdose, death, and a lot of other things that can happen. So if we can help people of no charge to get into treatment and gain sobriety, and through the support of just the community, it's essential to someone's life because they're fighting for life at the end of the day.
What are some of the treatment centers they can send them to?
We send them all over Alabama, honestly. We've sent several to Mobile, Montgomery, Birmingham, Hartsell. We've sent some to Tennessee, and to Gunnersville. It's literally all over the state of Alabama.
These are like 13-step programs or something along those lines?
12-step programs.
12-step programs, sorry.
A lot of them do have 12 steps, and some are, it's free-based, so they're, it's real-life situations because a lot of them, it's their perspective on things. And they may not like a 12-step program. They may want a smart recovery. They may want just straight-on therapy and then educational process, psychoeducational groups. So it's a broad spectrum when we're reaching out to different agencies for treatment options.
Second. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussions or questions? Thank you for that.
Thank you so much for coming up here and speaking on that.
Of course, thank you.
All right, Kyle, this comes out of our opioid settlements.
Yeah, opioid drug fund, specific litigation that is restricted for opioid mitigation.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Landis.
Aye.
Pike.
Jackson.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Pepp. Aye.
Resolution 25, 187, approved five to zero. Resolution 25, 188, appoint Chad Bowman to Director of Planning. Second by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Start date September?
September 2nd for Chad.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call?
Landis.
Aye.
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 Jackson.
Aye.
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 Resolution 25, 188, approved five to zero. Resolution 25, 189, appoint Hunter Allen to Director of Parks and Recreation. Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pepper. He is here.
Yeah, he is here, and that's effective today.
All right, any discussion?
I'm kind of curious, and we kind of discussed that. How's the effective start date today? And will you vote on it?
Because it's an appointment effective today. This council majority said to move forward. I had reasonable expectation it would be approved. He has been engaged since last Monday. People have been calling him about department operations. It is appropriate to make sure he gets on payroll as soon as possible. He was ready and willing to go, and so here we are.
But it's not official, or shall until we vote on it?
It's been voted on effective today.
We're about to vote on it now.
Well, if you vote no, then that's a different matter, but the effective date is off.
But there's an assumption, and this is no reflection on them at all, but there's an assumption that we are going to do it, which actually means that we're sort of polling, and but there's an assumption that we're going to do this.
I had a reasonable expectation that it was going to happen based on this.
We can't have reasonable expectation as to the future of a vote.
We can agree to disagree. He's been on, he has been functioning on behalf of this city. It's effective today. He needs to be on payroll.
Of course I support this, but we cannot have reasonable expectations as to a vote. Something could have happened today. Anything could have happened today where Mr. Allen or Mr. Jones. Something happened where the council came back and said, wait a minute, this is not our guy. I mean, anything could have happened, but now we're having reasonable expectations as to what we're going to vote on.
I have a reasonable assumption that this was going to be approved.
I think anyone of her position. Hasn't this happened in several other positions as well?
Probably.
I'm going to say, I'm pretty positive this has happened in several other positions. It didn't happen with Chief Fisher here.
This is where we are today. My recommendation is that we move forward.
I'm sorry.
I understand what you're saying. I respect your opinion.
But it's not my opinion that counts. It's the law that counts.
I don't know there's a law that says he can't start on the same day that he's appointed.
The thing is, yeah, he could start after we vote on it. After we vote on it. After it becomes official vote of the council, but not before.
Okay, well, here we are. So we'll take that recommendation going forward.
That's not a recommendation. That's how the, Herman, tell me where I'm wrong.
We, we've in the past, not necessarily salaries and all that, I understand what you're saying. Is this the beginning of a pay period?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's one reason.
But it does not have to happen, Herman. That's not a requirement that it has to happen prior to the beginning of a pay period. I mean.
That's just been, that's just been the standard. I understand it doesn't have to, but that's been the way it's occurred over years, year to year. The answer, if you do not choose to appoint him, then we will, the city can pay him for the work he's done. That's simple as that.
That's fine, but so a department head could go out and buy things because they expect us to vote on those things?
No, I agree, that's.
I think this is a totally.
I think, I think the HR director, the HR director has heard you, and I've heard you, and we'll... Anyway, he's being appointed potentially on the same day that he began work. I know that others have been here and got appointed afterwards.
This is, okay, this is, again, this is no reflection on Mr. Allen or Mr. Jones. This is a reflection on the process, and then it shouldn't happen like this.
Well, it's an opportunity for improvement.
It's a reflection of your candidacy, right?
From an HR perspective, I felt it was important that we get him on payroll as soon as possible. I've heard your feedback. We will, I've heard the feedback. We will take it under advisement. Thank you.
This should not happen. This should not happen.
All right, any other discussion? I would just say, before we vote, I think that's a reasonable thought that maybe start dates the next day. I just want to thank you for going through the process. We had really good, very good candidates for this role. It's a very important role in the city, a very big role. And you did an excellent job in your interview, and I'm excited to get started. So I just wanted to say that we had four really good candidates that interviewed for this role, so.
And I'm excited for you to start, too. You've already reached out to me and made plans for us to get together and talk about things that are happening in my district and other districts, so I'm really excited for you to come on. And again, I can't reiterate enough that this conversation is not a reflection of your candidacy or you being an employee here.
Well, thank you, and really, you're right. I totally understand where your account's from, so.
Okay.
Any other discussion? We do have a motion and a second. Roll call?
Landis.
Aye.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Pepp.
Aye.
Resolution 25, 189, approved five to zero. Resolution 25, 190, appoint Johnny Jones to Director of New Services. We have a motion second by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion?
Johnny wore today, is that odd?
No, it's not.
Same thing, Johnny, I guess I would have to call you Johnny. Mr. Jones, great job in your interview. Thank you for applying. We had two really good interviews. You did an excellent job. Happy, excited to see the future of DYS with you leading it, so. We do have a motion second. Any other discussion?
Thank you both for being willing to serve with the city of Decatur. Coach Jones, you've been with the city for a while. You know the process. Mr. Allen, I'm sure you know the process. Your family was with the city for a while. So we're really glad to have both of you serving in the roles that you're serving in. I believe that you'll do a fantastic job in the position that you both have.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Landis. Aye.
Pike.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution 25, 190, approved five to zero. Anything else from directors? Okay, we'll move into our public comments portion of the meeting. We got two signed in. First is Mike Baruki.
I would also just like to concur. I don't know how the city website announced the Parks and Rec director on their website before you all voted. It just does not make sense, clearly. That's a process failure, but that's not the first that we've experienced here. Clarity does count. There's been a lot of half-truths that have been espoused over the last, at least two years that I've been coming to council meetings. Let me suppose this to you and ask this question. If somebody came and wanted to develop a property in your neighborhood, Jacob, or your neighborhood, or your neighborhood, or anybody's neighborhood, and the builder then would contract, or makes an agreement to contract with a company that you own, would that be an ethical violation?
For me to vote on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I've spent a little bit of time in over the last two days.
To vote on that, but I would just.
Well, Mr. Mars can, might build it and give us some insights, but, because I would agree. I would consider that to be unethical. Out in Burning Tree, District 3, there's been a building problem for at least the last four years. They keep building stuff, or they build an area, and then the developer just stopped, and the place looks like, you know, The Walking Dead kind of scenario. It looks horrible. Weeds are literally as tall. No weed abatement anytime soon. But come to find out, talking to the residents who live right behind there, and they're very expensive houses, who are very upset about that process as it occurred, a mayoral candidate was contracted to provide the conduit used in that facility. Now, I would consider that especially a potential ethical violation if that same individual, although not elected at the time, was in the planning commission at the time. So I offer to you, we need to have full transparency about how that happened. We need to have full accountability of how that happened, and a process absolutely needs to be filled or fulfilled to make sure that kind of thing doesn't happen in the city again.
Can you pause this time real quick? So just to educate you on the process, since you seem to know so much, you can fill out a form online. Actually, you need to print it off, but as an ethical complaint.
I've already filled out one on tab bowling. Trust me, Mr. Pepper, I know exactly how to do that.
Fill out that form, get it, load it up, as you said, develop and del investigate it.
And my concern.
The council has no authority over that whatsoever.
Actually, actually, the council does, because the process went.
Tell me how some council has any authority over that whatsoever.
You know, I cannot listen when you continue to talk over me.
None.
You can ask him the question, or you can.
Answer it.
Okay. Actually, you do. You may never have been present for it, but you have a, your job after the planning commission approved it was to vote on it. And you failed to adequately ask questions about how that was happening, when it happened.
Thank you.
I had a cute little speech about moving forward written down, but I'm not going to do that speech today. I just want you all to know that you're the worst council who have stood up through these chambers, who have, and you, the way you just hollered out, you not know how that makes us look as a city? You are an embarrassment to this city.
Same to this city.
And not only, yeah, huh-huh, not only you, but all of you have been up here for your own good. You have stacked your own pockets up, and you have not done anything for these citizens in the city of Decatur. How about the homeless population? But no, but when it comes down to your friends and what your fight company and what this company needs, you're willing to give them and bend over for them. But what the citizens of Decatur need, you all don't care about. What about our water crisis?
What's wrong with?
You keep drinking and see what's going to happen.
Drinking and running.
You, well, you keep drinking and see what's going to happen. And I'm glad that most of you will be off this council when it comes time for a new council to come in. And Pike, you're going to see us for a while. You're going to see me for a while. And as Anissa told you, you're not even half of what your grandfather was. Your grandfather was a great man, but you were never able to fill those shoes because of your attitude because you think you know it all, and you don't know anything. You all have been a disgrace to this city, and especially you, Hunter. But one thing I do like about you, Hunter, you told the truth about what side you was on at the beginning. We all knew you was a clown, but you let everybody know that you was a clown. But the rest of you, you tried to hide behind those sheets, and once those sheets got pulled off, we could tell exactly who you are. Thank you.
Mr. Mars, or anything else in the council?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm going to request that the council go into executive session to discuss and have presented to you a purchase or exchange of some city property, and in addition to that, potential city investment as part of a matter of trade or commerce in which the city is in competition with other entities and other municipalities across the state. And the recruitment, negotiations, and competitive position, this was, and it will be discussed if you, whatever you decide, will be discussed publicly, but now we're just asking you to listen and then decide where we go. But if we do it presently, it will impact negatively proprietary and confidential trade information. And I would also suggest that once we have finished that executive session, that the meeting is adjourned. In other words, you would not come back today. Obviously, if you decide to move forward with this, then it'll be publicly described and discussed, and any questions will be answered. All right, so I'd ask that you do that. Vote to ask.
So moved to go into executive session? The motion to go into executive session by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call?
Landis.
Aye.
Pike.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aye.
That motion is approved five to zero. Go to sixth floor, Herman.
Yes, be on sixth floor, yeah, thank you. Once y'all have met, it's adjourned.